Thank you. Good evening, everybody. City Council Meeting of March 21st, 2023, calling to order here at City Hall. Welcome all. Would the clerk please confirm the roll?
All council members are present, Your Honor.
Very much. That's great to see. Mr. Rosen, with you being here tonight, would you lead us in the... Thank you. Let's see, before we move on to the consent agenda, I understand that we have a proposed change to the agenda. Mr. Gahal?
Yes, there's been some more information that's come to light over the last couple of hours. So I'd like to pull motion AB 23-036, Resolution Adopting Period Policy and Procedures, AB 23-037, Ordinance Repealing NBMC 3.0 Purchasing to the Next Finance Meeting.
Second. The motion is second for all in the audience and at the table. That is Main Agenda Items 10 and 11. Motion is second. Any further comment? Favor?
Aye.
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 Very much. Those two motions are move, or excuse me, those two end items are removed from tonight's agenda. With that, I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
No moved.
Second. You, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Me opposed. Motion carries and it is unanimous. Moving on, we're up to citizen comments. If you are a member of the public, either here in chambers or online, wish to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda, now included, we've removed, we would be glad to hear from you. Start here in chambers. You would just come to the podium. You're online, please indicate that box. Call upon you. You'll get up to three minutes to speak, starting with your name and address for the record. Looking at the audience, see one person moving.
Sign up for public comment. All right. So, good evening, Mayor McFarland, council and staff. For the record, I'm Wendy Wyker, Community Relations Manager for Republic Services located in Bellevue. I'm here tonight to reaffirm Republic Services' ongoing commitment to the city of North Bend. As I've mentioned at public comment over the last five months, and in the emails I sent to you in the last week, my team is surprised by the agenda to build before you. There's been no public meeting nor community engagement thus far in the RFP process that directed staff to negotiate with us or anyone else since last November's meeting. Staff recommended Republic Services to you as the highest ranking, least expensive loser. There are three points I'd like to make, reiterate tonight. First, since the start of this process, Republic Services has been and continues to welcome the opportunity to negotiate a renewed contract. North Bend includes customer credits and any other items you want in a new agreement. We know January 2022 was inconvenient and challenging for North Bend residents, had started the process to remedy that going forward. While we started in that direction, staff changed, meetings were canceled, there was never clear direction by council to do so. Second, regarding the very critical math and customer bills at hand, let's be clear. By changing the timeline of the contract from 10 years to 12 to give the higher cost proposer an advantage to lower rates, not give North Bend ratepayers the actual benefit of lower rates. Republic Services were allowed to, a 12-year contract option to depreciate and amortize equipment and trucks, our proposed lower rates would be lower still. You're comparing a 10-year rate model to a 12-year rate model misrepresents the accounting differences and operations modeling over time in the two proposals. Two-year difference is an unfair, inconsistent cost comparison for your constituents who ultimately pay the bill and are struggling with significant economic and inflationary headwinds these challenging days. Third, as the incumbent partner who has been proudly serving North Bend for over three decades, Public Services has the team and tools in place to provide uninterrupted excellent service going forward. Drivers know your streets, neighbors and businesses. The outreach and customer care staff have the digital and in-person tools in place to be answering customer questions, conducting recycling education programs, North Bend residents and businesses. Finally, when we turn to the priority of sustainability and climate action, Public Services' commitment to zero-waste programs, second to none. We have nationally recognized programs in fleet electrification, cycling diversion from landfills, and are leading the industry with our Plastic Circularity Polymer Center opening in Vegas this spring. Here at home, our local cities have the highest recycling rates in King County. So on behalf of my Republic Services drivers, all center staff, billing clerks, cycling outreach coordinators, operations managers, maintenance technicians and management, please know we are proud of our 30 years of service to North Bend and stand ready and absolutely willing work with your team on a renewed service agreement. Have the time to be right by your constituents. Thank you for your time.
All timed, Wendy. Anyone else here in chambers?
Good evening. Steve Brum with Recology. I'm the Regional Vice President for the company, for the Pacific Northwest. And my office is at 801 South Fidalgo Street in Seattle. Mayor McFarland, councilors, good evening on behalf of Recology's 3,700 employee owners, the 400-plus employee owners we have here in the King County area. I want to thank you all, as well as city staff, for inviting us to be here tonight. We're honored. The city will be considering Recology for the opportunity to serve the city's residents and businesses for the next 12 years with the collection of management of the city's recyclables, compostables and solid waste. It's also our honor to share with the city our vision for a world without waste. We appreciate that the city sees the quality of service that Recology brings to the municipalities that we serve. What we will bring to the city of North Bend is the best value in our industry and the Puget Sound region. Cities of Seattle and Issaquah, as well as nine other cities in the King County region, already are recognizing this value with long-term contracts with Recology. We also are the experts in this region for seamless contract transitions. In the past 15 years, Recology's implemented 15 successful city contract transitions, and we're also working on one currently with the city of Toquilla. Recology, we are a 100% employee-owned company. The ownership culture that we have drives our vision for a world without waste. The commitment to quality in our communities, that is second to none. Being employee-owned enables us to make long-term decisions beneficial to us all. We do not have to be chasing quarterly earnings expectations from Wall Street. Every driver, customer service rep and mechanic has a share and an ownership stake in the company. Recology's profits are reinvested back into our communities where we live, work and play. We create opportunities for ownership wealth in a company for segments of the population who do not normally see these opportunities. No other company in the waste and recycling industry can say these things. This does make us a different kind of a partner. Our relationships with our cities are not something that we commoditize. Your residents are not just numbers on a spreadsheet. We immerse ourselves in our cities in order to do what is best for the residents and the community. We collaborate with our municipal partners to go above and beyond what we're required to do. Maple Valley, SeaTac and Durian each have examples of where we've partnered with them to do something aside from the contract that's innovative and helps us to either create a better program or fix missteps that we've had in order to earn the satisfaction of every customer. Just because the contract does not say we don't have to do something doesn't mean we won't try and collaborate with the city to do so. We are also a local partner. This means when you call a Recology customer service representative, someone who lives and works here, answer the phone, someone who understands our unique geography, traffic patterns, weather, they visit the same businesses we're servicing, someone who can be available seven days a week and into the evening. We're a partner that takes the time to educate the community on environmental matters and how Recology can help reduce contamination, recycle. Yeah. So, final, yeah, our smaller size, employee ownership and stronger local presence is an asset to this county and would be to North Bend as well. And again, thank you for inviting us to be here tonight and for your consideration.
Very much. Anyone else here in chambers? We've got, we've got a lot of activity tonight. Good.
Jason Ritchie, 2802 Southeast 16th Street. So in the February 7th council meeting, motion to move the authorizing of the contract with Ray and Osborne for the Water System Plan Amendment is made. Move that to February 21st. It is a few meetings past now, and I haven't seen that item back on the agenda. I would urge council to invigorate that conversation, bring it back to the agenda. I would assume that that's a lengthy process to get that going through. I see no reason to delay getting it started.
You? Somebody else? Passing? Anyone else here in chamber? Bree, do we have anyone online? No one online? Other one coming?
Nick Jensen, I'm at 1906 Ollali here in North Bend. I just am one of the Citizen Academy people, and I wanted to make sure that we publicly said how much we appreciate the people on our right, the ladies and gentlemen, been teaching us for the last six weeks and really appreciate the time and the questions and the patience that they've had with us. But especially a thank you to Bree and Lisa, who have been nothing better. I couldn't think of better gatekeepers and welcomingers and making us feel like we are part of this process. So I just should be really proud of the staff you have, particularly those two.
Absolutely are. A really nice way to wrap Citizen. With that, we'll be moving on to announcements, presentations and appointments. And amazingly, Item 6 here is a presentation. This is the 2023 Citizens Academy Graduation. So I've got a few words here, then I'm going to get up. I've got a number of certificates to hand out. I'm going to ask all of those graduates to come and join me. We'll get one more photo op in. It is really my honor tonight to introduce to the council and to the North Bend community 15 citizens who joined us for this inaugural 2023 Citizens Academy. These individuals logged more than 17 hours in class time, spending weeknights and a few Saturdays with us. They've been active participants, had great questions. In fact, many spared additional time to stay late, further connect administration, legal, public records, information, finance, fire, police, public works, community and economic development. These 15 people are an inspiring reminder, civically engaged community. And they're not done. My understanding that tomorrow, they're going to slog it around wastewater treatment. So that shows you the dedication that they're in. So congratulations on that one. Our goal for the Citizens Academy is to provide new avenue for civic engagement and ultimately to grow participation in the public process here in North. Success, local government truly does depend on the active involvement of our citizen. One perfect and obvious example of that is right here, your city council, who's gotten involved, and of course, those of you joining tonight's city council meeting. And I do, for the Citizens Academy, call out poster child of that, our bro Tem went through a Citizens Academy long before North Bend had one. She went over to Snoqualmie, find out. Councilmember Colan, here sits here now, not only as a council member, but she's this year's pro Tem. Thank you, guys. So, I wanted to call that out, wanted to thank you. This was a dream of mine from the time that I was aware of the academy in Snoqualmie. Came in, office, planning, do this. We had it drawn up, original design, started pulling it together, then that thing that we no longer want to talk about happened. We had to wait a while. I'm just thrilled that we were able to get this up and going. So with that, I also want to be sure that everyone knows that moving forward, we do plan to continue offering the Citizens Academy on an annual basis. Those of you who did not get an application in on time, we do have a waitlist. Please stay tuned for information on the next series. We'll be doing it again. I'm going to move away from the mic, so Bree, I hope the air out here will be picking up words. My understanding was that at least one of the graduates was asking, well, now what do we got to do? Right? Exactly what you've already done. Get engaged, stay engaged, take part. We certainly invite you to stay for the rest of the meeting if you would like to. You understand that you do have other things in your lives as well, and so if you need to slip out, that's fine. Need to know that about city council meetings. Most folks come for the portion they're involved. Just great. Thrilled. Thank you so much. Ah, with that, we have another presentation, so I guess I have to give up or and move on. Snoqualmie Valley Health is here. Ms. Jensen, could step to the mic. She has a presentation about Snoqualmie Valley Health School and the health. All yours.
Thank you. Good evening, council members and mayor. Thank you so much for having me tonight. It's a pleasure and an honor to be here to present to you. I have been with the hospital district for about two and a half years now. And when I arrived, I found a hospital that was merely surviving and not thriving. However, we were in the middle of this little worldwide pandemic we called COVID. And so through our time with COVID and serving this community, we have been able to put together a strategic plan that is going to take the hospital and the health district beyond where it has been and grow into something this community can be very proud of. During COVID, the healthcare district provided over 35,000 vaccinations to our community members, thousands of COVID tests and over $1.5 million annually in uncompensated care. That's a lot of community benefit for a community of this size. So, in addition to helping our community get through COVID and survive and begin to survive or thrive, we have added many services. The hospital district has not received a levy tax lift since 2008. It has been surviving on its own, trying to make ends meet however it can. But in despite of that, COVID gave us the gift and the ability to be able to rethink what we've been doing and be able to reimagine how we can grow with the community. So in the past two and a half years, we've added services. We've added three behavioral health providers. We've added urgent care. We added a new electronic medical record that gives you safer care and online access to all of your medical records, which will also transfer to any other facilities outside of our area. We've added members to our primary care team. And most recently, we opened a medical aesthetics program that will be integrated with our primary care services. Just two weeks ago, we announced a partnership with Space Labs. If you don't know Space Labs, they are a local company that actually was responsible for monitoring astronauts that, like Lance Armstrong, that landed on the moon. And they are actually right here in Snoqualmie. We will be partnering with them to be able to deliver state-of-the-art technology to patients and residents right here in Snoqualmie as a pilot site for their technology. So we are doing things that are amazing, and we're excited to be able to serve the community more. But we know that we cannot recover the growth that this community has outgrown us, and we haven't kept up with that pace. And we need to be able to do more, and we need to think about the future. And so we would like to do some things that are on this slide here. I see everybody reading ahead of me. So spoiler alert, we want to expand the emergency department. Right now, when I started, we were seeing about eight or nine patients a day. We are currently seeing almost 20 patients a day, and on some days, we have seen more. That wait time in emergency rooms is growing across our county and our area. In some, not to be mentioned hospitals, you might wait three, six or even eight hours for care in those emergency rooms. I don't want you to have to wait for your emergency care for you or your family. We need to stay ahead of that growth. We only have four or five beds available in our ED, and if at any one given time we have a patient that's waiting for a bed to transfer to nearby facility, or maybe a behavioral health patient that needs specialty care in a specialty bed, they can be with us for days. And they take up beds, and we don't have the ability to have good throughput. We want to make sure that you can bring your children to us for stitches and be home in time for dinner. Want to make sure we can serve you, but that means we need to grow. We are almost at capacity for the number of beds we have. You'd say 20 patients a day isn't a ton, but unfortunately, in an emergency room, those 20 patients all seem to come in the same hour. They don't spread themselves out or call ahead and see when they should come. Along with that, we need to add a new MRI and CT scanner. Both of these pieces of equipment are at end of life. They're critical life-saving technology and imaging that you need in a hospital and a healthcare center. We have great new providers that do women's health program. Every two to three years, we do a community health needs assessment to determine what are the most important needs that we need to provide to keep our community healthy. One of those things, as you can imagine, is women's health. We do not have mammography. So any women that need a mammography have to travel out of our area to have those critical services. I mentioned behavioral health. We've added three full-time providers, but we are full. One of those providers even specializes in pediatrics, so we would like to be able to add more to our team to better serve our community. Anytime a hospital or health center grows, that means we're going to be adding careers. That means more family wage jobs and more professionals that can live right here in our own community without having to travel. We want to be able to make sure that we're not just Snoqualmie-centric. We want to make sure that North Bend and outlying areas like Ball City have more services closer to home, and they don't have to always travel just to Snoqualmie. We want to make sure that the citizens of North Bend don't even think about bypassing us, that everything that you need is available to you right down the road, and yet you don't have to go into the city and pay for parking to be able to get health services. We want to make sure that this isn't, it's not just a hospital, but it's healthcare services. We have two primary care clinics. We have an urgent care now, and I mentioned medical aesthetics. We want to be able to continue to expand those services to make sure that we can remain independent. You may or may not know that Snoqualmie Hospital is an independent. It's one of the rare few independent hospitals that still exist in Washington State. We are small, but we are mighty. One most important thing about being independent is that we have an elected board of commissioners. I have one of our commissioners, Vice President of our Board, Commissioner Jen Carter with me tonight. Hi, Jen. So our commissioners are elected just like council members, right from our own community, and their job is to make sure that the needs of the community are heard and our hospital and healthcare services represent those voices. Being an independent hospital, a community hospital like we are, allows us to do that. Making sure that we have a long-term viability ensures that our community connection is important and stays intact. So economic impact, it's important to have good schools and good hospitals and good healthcare services to ensure the economic development of your communities. When people decide if they're going to live in your community, they want to know if there is good healthcare services. They want to know if there are good schools. This is an important part of us engaging with each of the cities to make sure that economic development plans are strong and robust for the future. So how are we going to do all this? Right now, in the past two years, we've had some of the best financials the hospital's had in a very long time, and we are breaking even, which sounds amazing. We aren't making a ton of money, but we're making enough to be able to keep the hospital operating and providing the services we do today. But unfortunately, it doesn't leave anything left over to do these big investments, these strategic investments that I've been speaking to. So in order to be able to do that, we are asking the community to support us with a levy increase. The last time there was a levy increase for the hospital was 2008. That's a really, really long time. And so that increase, as you can see on the slide here, would mean for the average home, about $19 a month. Side. So, one of the biggest concerns and credits, and one of the reasons why I think the commissioners and the board did not do a levy increase sooner was because there's a lot of sensitivity to taxes. There's a lot of needs in these smaller communities, like schools and libraries and fire and police. And so we, I think the hospital was concerned about that. So one of the things that we have come up with this year to help offset the concern about increase in tax is this tax credit program. So essentially, it's pretty easy. If you live in the district and you own a home and you pay taxes, a portion of those taxes go to support the hospital. There's a line item on your bill that says actually hospital. If you bring in a receipt for payment of those taxes to us, we will give you 100% credit for the amount paid towards any of the services you might receive at the hospital. So if you have an emergency room visit and you need diagnostic imaging, you need stitches or whatever it might be, you can bring your bill in and get 100% credit to the patient portion of the responsibility. So it's not the insurance. The insurance pays their part. This is actually your cash-out-of-hand responsibility. If you go see Dr. Rubin, who is in the audience with us tonight at the urgent care, you can use it towards that, or maybe your wife would like some Botox at our new medical aesthetics program. Your tax credit can even pay for that. So we're really excited to offer this. It's fantastic for seniors that often stay local for their So we're really excited to offer this. It's fantastic for seniors that often stay local for their care and they're most concerned about taxes and their ability to afford them. So seniors can come and receive that tax credit. It's renewable each year, so that means if you use it this year, then don't worry, you can get it again next year when you pay your tax credit or tax bill again. And the last question I have about this is people like, okay, well, if you need, if we give a tax credit, then why do you even need the levy lift? Well, essentially, this is also a marketing tool for us. We know that we don't serve 100% of the community right now. People do out migrate from this community because there maybe hasn't been services they've needed or wanted to use in the past. This will hopefully give people the opportunity to try us again and give us a second chance since we are redesigning who we are and we are trying to better represent your needs. So hopefully, people that don't use us will begin to use us. And if you do use us already, it's a huge thank you for your business and hopefully continuing to gain your business in the future. Excited. So with that, again, my name is Renee Jensen. I am the CEO at the hospital. We would not be cool if we did not have a QR code, so I'm bringing you a QR code that you can scan. I left the council member some business cards that have this on it as well. If you scan that code, it will take you to our website where we have dedicated a page that is frequently asked questions. As I come to these presentations, we add more on their concerns that people get. We put the information there as much as we can. So hopefully, if you have more questions beyond tonight, you'll reach out, or if other people have questions, you can direct them to our site. So with that, mayor, I will turn it back over to you and ask if I can entertain any questions.
Absolutely. Thank you, Renee. Council, I'm sure there's a couple of questions or comments.
Thank you. You might explain to the audience that's watching the vast ends of people that are watching the meeting tonight. What exactly is the area that you cover district for? How big is that area? What communities are involved?
Great. Thank you so much for that question. They only gave me 10 minutes. I could talk about this all day, but that is definitely an important part. So we have a very large district. We cover over 400 square miles. Our district goes all the way up to Snoqualmie Pass, to the Tiger Mountain Summit, all of Fall City, Preston, and Carnation, of course, North Bend and Snoqualmie are all included in that area. Thank you.
And one other follow-up on the tax credit program. What about people who aren't property tax owners that you're trying to encourage to use your facility?
Yes, so we are, you may have noticed, we've had a lot of, recently in the past two years, a lot more social media presence and word of mouth. And we've been hiring some amazing doctors and we've been really working hard to get out in the community and make sure that, know that we're here for them. One of the things that I heard, we attend now a lot of the community events and maybe some that we haven't in the past. One of the things I hear from people are like, what? There's a hospital here? They even know that. So we've been working hard to make sure that, and honestly, it's not just a hospital. You might see that this logo on the slide that says Snoqualmie Valley Health. That's because we aren't just a hospital and this will become our new parent brand as we rebrand ourselves to the community later this summer. You'll likely see a new logo as well. Snoqualmie Valley Health will be the parent brand with Snoqualmie Valley Hospitals, Snoqualmie Valley Clinics, Snoqualmie Valley Urgent Care, et cetera, underneath that parent brand. But really trying to help the community understand, we're not the same healthcare facility that we were a few years ago. Thank you.
And will your hospital be accepting patients on Medicare, Medicaid, or Apple Care? And also about our low-income patients that have no insurance?
Yes, thank you for that question as well. One of the things about being a public hospital district and a community hospital that's independent means that we accept all patients, all payers, and even those that don't have insurance. We currently accept Apple Care, Medicaid, Medicare, et cetera. And as I mentioned in my opening statement, we provide 1.5 million dollars a year right now in uncompensated care. So that means if you're unable to pay your bill or have lower income, that we do provide free services to those most in need. Thank you for that question.
Mr. Rosen.
You're, I think you were talking about the levy at 70 cents per thousand. How does that compare to places like Issaquah and other surrounding cities?
For, so the closest public hospital district to here would be Valley Renton or Evergreen Health in Kirkland. And millions and millions and millions of dollars separate the amount of dollars brought in by those facilities compared to ours, of course. The historical rate for the hospital in 2008 was set at 50 cents per thousand. And the interesting thing about hospitals and as city council member, you guys are informed and you know this, but once you set your levy rate, that dollar amount stays the same and the levy rate declines every year. We've done some projections and we estimate that after a five-year period, the levy rate will decline to 40 cents per thousand. So it declines rather quickly. And again, just like you, we are limited by our increase to only 1% per year. So it does not even allow us to keep with inflation. Thank you for that.
Renee, I noted you, earlier on, you mentioned three behavioral health providers. And last week, we were in a meeting together in the county on the crisis care plan that they have. So number one, I wanted to step to that where it's going to be up services as well as services. I'm glad the hospital's taking part in that conversation. We're looking at ways to leverage services and the ways you're looking at these things. Question that I get, a little one harder maybe to answer, but maybe not. Why haven't you joined a large, I need to.
Fantastic question. So just prior to COVID, the hospital did a lot of work. They put out an RFP to say, because honestly, they thought they were going to have to close their doors. They didn't think they're going to be able to remain open. And they asked for people that wanted to partner and affiliate. And the long story short is that Snoqualmie is not a very desirable partner because there's a lot of debt that has been acquired over time with just to keep the hospital open and keep it as a community hospital. And believe it or not, elected officials are not always desirable when you're trying to affiliate. You can imagine that the personalities can be challenging, especially if they're running a healthcare facility and may or may not know anything about healthcare.
We've never experienced that.
No, you guys are all lovely. So COVID put a huge kind of break on that. It said, oh my gosh, we have to all focus on keeping our hospitals open and our communities safe. But what did come out of those affiliation talks was one of the best things that I think happened. We were able to hire independent providers, physicians for our emergency room. So as of two years ago, our physicians in our emergency room are an independent group, the same independent group that staffed over like hospitals. So you have amazingly qualified, highly educated and highly skilled physicians staffing your ED. The affiliation stopped there. I actually, prior to this, came from an organization that had, that was much larger, that had affiliated with a smaller hospital. And I can tell you from firsthand experience, you give up a lot. So it might keep your hospital open, but you give up your voice, you give up your independence, you give up your flexibility. There's a lot of sacrifices that communities make when they affiliate and you have to become part of the big machine. And I think communities like North Bend and Snoqualmie enjoy having their say and having their healthcare services the way they would like them and independent decisions about it. I mean, what's better than having an elected board of five people that get to really represent your voice and the services that you have here? Otherwise, somebody at corporate would say, you know, I know you guys really like XYZ service, but it doesn't make any money. Like behavioral health, for example, behavioral health is not a service line that generates revenue. We try to provide it as a service to the community. And they might say, we can't do that here. We're going to centralize it in Bellevue or Seattle or wherever that affiliation might be. So it allows us to be able to say those tax dollars can support some of those services that aren't necessarily going to be revenue generators. You're welcome.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you guys so much for having me. I know that there may be some comments or questions from the audience, so I'll be available.
Great. Council, with that, we are ready to, sorry.
I'm Dr. Jason Rubin. I just wanted to pay a word or two if that's all right.
Sure.
Yeah. I live in North Bend, at 43801 Southeast 87th Street. I've lived in North Bend for over 10 years and I've worked at Snoqualmie Valley Hospital since 2005, 17 years. I spent most of that time in the emergency department. More recently, I left the ER to become the COVID lead physician and the medical director of the Snoqualmie Ridge Urgent Care. I'll be taking care of any of you and your families. Over the last 17 years, I've watched the needs of our community continue to grow. I started off working in a small, three-bed emergency department where this Snoqualmie Tribal Family Clinic is now. As our volumes increased, we expanded into the new hospital, a six-bed ER. We doubled. And more outpatient services, and it truly was a night and day difference. But over the past few years, I've been watching our doubles, our volumes double again. We have a fantastic ER crew right now, but it's become obvious that we're soon going to become space limited. Our little waiting room is starting to fill up more and more. We can hire more staff, but we really do need more physical rooms to care for patients, more lab space to keep up with all the ancillary tests, and state-of-the-art CT and MRI machines so that we can get the same high-quality images as any other hospital in the area. That's why I support this tax levy, so our doctors, nurses, and staff can continue to provide excellent care to our patients and this community while keeping the wait times low. That's the healthcare that my friends and neighbors deserve.
And so with that, we're ready to move on to mission and committee reports. Start with Ms. Miller, Community Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All right. CED, which is Community and Economic Development Committee, met today at 3:30, 21st, of course, in the adjournment room. And we had three things on our agenda. First up was the docket for 2023 Code Amendments, 2024 Comprehensive and Update. And the committee recommended to consent, so for initiation of the docket, so you'll see that coming forward. We had also on the agenda a legislative given to us by Rebecca Deming, much appreciated. And then finally, we discussed a council field trip in the future, which is tentative for, let's see, July, sometime in July at 6:00 PM, about a two-hour tour. And we next meet April 18th in the German room. Thank you.
You. Count Health, Finance and Administration.
Thank you. The Finance and Administration Committee met March 14th at 4 o'clock at the City Hall adjournment room. We discussed the motion that was a consent agenda tonight for Pendleton Consulting LLC. We discussed a motion that's coming up tonight on our agenda, authorizing new business with Robert Half. The two motions that were moved off tonight were also discussed, repurchasing ordinance and then the new policy ordinance removing the old two ones. So that was moved to finance. Ending items for upcoming meetings are city debt, relief, finance reporting, quarterly reports, investment, finance department staffing size competitors with other cities and all weird.
Mr. Rosen, Public Health and Safety.
We met on March 7th at 4 o'clock here at City Hall. We have three items on our agenda. We had a presentation from some of our local nonprofit regarding behavioral health programs that the city hoped to come with some of our armpits, and I believe we're getting very close to funding. So that'll be fantastic. In addition to that, we also had a police and a fire update. It's all your honor.
Very much. Mr. Lauenbeck, Patient and Public Works.
Thank you, your honor. We last met on February 28th at the meeting adjournment room, 4 o'clock. We had 11 items on the agenda, several of which have been moved forward on previous consent agendas and this evening's consent agenda, and several items that we're going to be discussing in it. We talked about closing out a North Bend Wade Capital project on sidewalks, a waters and roadway improvement capital project on Second Street, ILA with King County Way for pavement overlay, a contract with DKS for transportation planning and engineering review, contract with Adrevo for leak detection services to continue our efforts in moving I and I issues in our water system, contract for on-call services with equally electric. Motion we discussed last week that was a subject that we discussed was the QCC water sewer wastewater treatment and SCADA system upgrade we approved last week. And consideration of a modification for the Second Street Ballarat Avenue intersection from a two-way stop to a four-way stop was discussed as well. The next meeting will be next Tuesday at 4 o'clock in the adjournment room.
Thank you. Count Health, back to you, Eastside Fire and Rescue.
Thank you. Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met March 9th at 4:00 PM at Eastside Fire and Rescue Headquarters on Wayne. We administered the OTH office to three new individuals, one which is an emergency management analyst, the other was a court care coordinator, and then an emergency manager. We also discussed regular business, the fire chief performance evaluation and policy of roles and responsibilities. Record, a robust discussion about virtual meetings and how to move those forward. We're to that as we go forward and understanding on how we can, and then up a little bit more. We did have an executive session, end of it, we ended. Some things that point out, we are going to start having, and this is, this council is, there is a, we did this fire ground 101, and we're going to be bringing that back. We'll be getting invitations out to you guys for the summers. It's really a fun environment where you get to learn what it takes to be a firefighter. You actually get to do some of their tools. I went several years ago and was able to wear one of those masks and go into a smoke room and try to pull somebody out, understand how to do that. So I encourage this council to get involved and, no, you're right. No, you know, the last time, you know, it happened and they just, and I.
They might run out of masks when they send you in the building.
Yeah, they said, don't let Jonathan come and drive anything.
Deming, you out there, action reports.
Thank you. The Planning Commission last met on March 1st for an introduction open house appearing on the Housing Needs Assessment and Housing Act and being prepared by the city's consultant Blue Line Group. Planning Commission also held annual appointments for chair and vice chair. Susan Torgerson will continue as chair 2023, and Olivia Mo will serve as vice chair. Planning Commission will next meet on April 5th to continue with review and deliberation on the housing action plan for a recommendation to city council. Park's Commission did not meet last month. Both Park and Planning Commission will jointly meet on April 19th, deliberate and possibly make a recommendation to council in the updated draft element. The Economic Development Commission last met February 28th. Commission set its priorities for the remainder of 2023, and the EDC will next meet Tuesday, March 28th.
You. Move on to regional committees. Ellen.
King County Board of Health, they met on 3/16 via hybrid Zoom or in person. I wanted you to know the mask mandates are ending on April 3rd for hospitals, jails, and long-term facilities. They had an update on youth and cannabis use. They are currently focusing on very young children that are accidentally ingesting edibles that look like candy. Have plans to require packaging to be less appealing to teenagers, and they would like a safe storage program for vapes and oils. Gave a state legislative update about bills that have died and bills that are still alive. And there is a rise of the number of cases and.
Come back.
Thank you. We, the Public Issues Committee of the Sound Cities Association, met second week of this month. And we spent about an hour and a half on a legislative update. And it was mostly focused on the impacts of several bills concerning housing affordability. House Bill 1110, it's modified, but is still causing a lot of consternation among a lot of the communities in the state. It's the proposal that would mandate that any single-family zoning, the majority of communities in this state would have to allow for two or four plexes anywhere in the city. would have to allow for two or four plexes anywhere in the city, uh, that's zoned. Single-family resident. And if you're a larger city, it'd be up six and higher. So some, if you have a single-family home, essentially, you could end up having to, uh, welcome six neighbors, a lot more. It's, uh, it seems to have a life of its own. Doesn't seem to be a lot of will in Olympia to, uh, swade them from moving forward, uh, with this proposal. Uh, right now, city of North Bend is below the threshold for, um, mandating the, uh, upgrades, the upzoning in all residential zones. But, um, as is the case with most things, they start off at one level, and they seem to creep their way back to the rest of it. So just keep that on your radar. Uh, if you have an opportunity to communicate with your elected officials in Olympia, strongly suggest you do so while there's still chance to, uh, potentially modify those, uh, those proposals. The other, uh, item that took up most an hour was a review of the King County Regional Homelessness Association and its draft budget coming forward, um, billions, billions of dollars. Seems like there is no end to it. Uh, unfortunately, um, some of the governance model has come under scrutiny, uh, the effectiveness of some of the programming. And, uh, we're having a lot of discussions on a regional level about what we can do, try and get some accountability and some, uh, regional equity in terms of bringing services to the outlying areas. Uh, we are paying the same rates and taxes as anybody else, but, uh, coming back to us, it's, uh, somewhat suspect. That's what we did, and, uh, there is a, uh, networking dinner on the 29th. Those of you who have, uh, not in your reservation yet, I don't know if it's closed at this point. Uh, that's an opportunity to get and meet with all the other elected officials in the. Sit your own.
House? Ellen, back to you.
Air Pro Tim update. We had a work study on February 28th. It involved complete streets plan. This would be converting North Bend Way, the current highway, to a well landscaped, multimodal boulevard, farm-based codes implemented to beautify the architecture and public spaces along Boulevard, and also to promote safety with bike lanes and mobility.
Speaking up, I skipped over you on that. It's easily even right next to me and could have just given me the elbow. A couple other regional things, uh, the Sound Regional Council Executive Board. Our first meeting was in January, uh, late January, where we approved the calendar for the year and reviewed expected work plan. Also met again then on February 23rd, receive a legislative update. Out and back describes, um, and then our next meeting is this Thursday. King County Growth Management Planning Council, uh, committee at its first meeting on January 25th. We're, where we discussed amendments to the four-to-one with management, uh, mandate and policies. Our next meeting is tomorrow, where it is possible, we will take a vote amendments to that plan as introduced. Um, should mention that the Snoqualmie Valley Urban Association meets tomorrow evening. Um, any of you are intending that? Will I be? The SVGA Transportation Committee has not met here, but will be meeting soon, uh, to continue our work with Metro, our local Snoqualmie Valley Transit and its services here to the local, like, uh, flood control district for King County. It adopted its calendar and work plan via email earlier this year. Formal meeting is yet. Brings us to the end of regional committee report. I've missed nothing else. Move on to the main agenda. End item number eight, air packet, AB 23-034. This is a public hearing. Ordinance adopting North Bend Municipal Code 3.78, multi-family tax exemption program. Start with an update by, um, city attorney marshal. And any clarifying questions, only clarifying questions out of council. Then open the public hearing, big testimony. And after that, we will move to production of the motion. Patient, Ms. Marshall?
Thank you, sir. Would add a. And that would track with. Authorized. Um, anyone who's. In the program needs to demonstrate their. At least for multi-family, any of which. Eighty percent of the median house. Uh, the apple gift, the application. So our good receipt. All, um, permit, uh, permit is. Three years develop and. Which. And if that is approved, that is. Thereby using them for. Creative eight, twelve years. I would note. Night is. By law and the.
You, counsel, clarifying questions. Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you're a member of the public, wish to testify regarding this, uh, end of bill. Step forward if you're here in council chambers or indicate in the chat box or by star nine if you are online. Hold upon, you'll have a three minutes to speak, putting with your name and address for the record. Anyone here in chamber? Seeing any great flood to the, uh, podium? B, do we have anyone online? We have no one online. With that, close the public hearing. And let's see, this. Do, 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 do. Mr. Rosen, or excuse me, Mr. Lauenbeck.
No, it did not.
Did not. Anybody want to take ownership of this? Get where we were. This is, this is, uh, CED, Ms. Miller? I think it was, actually. Lost my way. Twenty-one. Motion's on.
Motion to approve AB 23-034, an ordinance adopting North Bend Municipal Code 3.78 relating to multifamily tax exemption program, the final reading.
Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Lauenbeck. Um, Ms. Miller, do you have anything to add?
Unfortunately, I don't have anything to add at this time.
Mr. Lauenbeck?
I think it's, uh, another demonstration of the city of North Bend doing what it can to help promote, uh, affordable living within the city. Uh, while we already have, uh, several projects underway, we'll encourage, uh, other development to come forward with, uh, not fully subsidized, but at least a, uh, more affordable rent situation here in our community, create work, housing.
That's all. Was it no? Right, seeing none, the motion before you is to approve AB 23-034, ordinance adopting North Bend Municipal Code 3.78 relating to a multi-family tax exemption program as a final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? Motion carries and it is unanimous. Thank you very much, counsel. Reminder, earlier this evening, we, uh, whoops, I'm sorry, I'm jumping ahead there. Uh, item number nine, AB 23-035. This is a motion authorizing each DAC contract regarding Robert Happ. Mr. Gold?
Good morning, mayor and counsel. HVAC is authorized to contract eligible entities in governmental services, including the purchase of goods and services. Period of this contract shall be for the balance of the year, the end user, which can, through one, January 1st. And. Staff is requesting approval of this cooperative agreement to business with Robert Happ International for the purpose of hiring temporary financial. It is my intent to make use of such to assist current staff clerical duties such as filing and organizing the department, although also completing the year-end process. The city council may be aware that the police and maintenance department has been. But for the time since I arrived, um, last April. Hiring of temporary staff to assist in getting the city current, also filling in during the. Now commence. Implementation of the new financial software, in Brooklyn, causes significant increase in the finance framework. Having Robert Happ available puts this greatly in this project. Goals to have the finance department current and the new software implemented and rectified at the end of 2023, the year end. Estimated cost of $1,000 is available, professional services, and due to the staff shortages that were budgeted, January 1st. So, uh, I know this is, uh, an unusual, uh, agreement. Worked with these and other cities before to make large, like a twelve-point system. And Lisa Marshall will speak to this, and I also have a representative, Robert Happ. Any? He also can speak to any questions you might have.
And did you have, Ms. Marshall, did you have something to add?
And, uh, there is. And I will add that. The form of. I, Robert. Allow it. Very much money, which would be a problem in. And there were other. Uh, we spoke with, uh, Robert Happ a couple of months. And so, uh, we were presented with. That allows qualifying agents to use others' contracts. Um, one of the other questions I received was what we do with. Nation, and there is a provision that says between the party, steering party and the vendor are resolved in the state of. That would be Washington. That language wasn't. Uh, in my view, this is a not. But it is a much. Do the Robert. Consider my role to support the department if. Go with.
You? Mr. Gold, did you want the representative to speak now, or it was just available for questions?
I'd like him to be available for.
Counsel, uh, as, as we turn to see if we have any clarifying, I want to reinforce, regardless of what we think of this contract, uh, the, as you're well aware, for, for the year, been one step forward and one step back. Sometimes felt like two steps back in finances. We've been adjusting, um, been down, uh, at least a position. Now we're currently down two, um, although we have a new manager starting this coming week. We're thrilled about that, and we've got an advertisement out, and I understand some patients are ready to reap. And so, again, we're going to hope, we're going to get back up full speed. But as, uh, Mr. Gold said, with the also transition to new software, a lot of added burden on, and so we have definitely struggled this entire year trying to get where we want to be. We'll also finally note, although he won't appreciate it, I committed to delivering a financial. Counsel. Order of the year. Again, that's a, that's a stretch as he's still behind the wheel. Get that as well. Um, with that, any clarifying questions, sure?
Yeah, I just wanna, we just came through finance, and I just wanted to give Robert a chance to explain because it may have come before this body at a different amount. Meaning why 50,000 as opposed to, I think we've seen other amount. You might want to.
I can clarify that, and I looked at the amount of, looked at the rates that they quoted me, varying rates, level of the, we would be hiring. And I came up with an average, and then I've been the hours, believe, will need all the work we need to do, and that's where I came up with. We do have in the budget that was asked at the finance meeting. And we do have the budget is in most. In, um, the administrative department of the general fund. And the rest of it, and that was 25,000, and the rest of it is the labor costs that I use. The budget, we have full-year budgeted manager for other staff. We use. I had to come back, but I mean, I wouldn't go over.
There was. Any other questions, Rosen?
Yeah, the, um, Lisa, the Texas thing seemed a little odd. You said, this is not the perfect. What is the?
Perfect answer would have been. Or. Powers and they heard it in the air. So that's where we ended. Quite bluntly, that would have. Just a low-risk item in my. And it does get.
Thank you.
Other clarifying questions? Okay, uh, if you are a member of the public and wish to speak on the item in front of us, step through the podium, indicate that box, and we'll call upon you. Three minutes to speak, putting with your name as for the record. Seeing any great rush to the podium again here in City Hall? B, do we have anyone online? One online. That, Count Health, turn to you for a motion.
Thank you. Motion to approve AB 23-035, authorizing the mayor to execute the HVAC intergovernmental operation contract. That sheriff, here too, is exhibit A.
Second. Mr. Rosen, I have second. Count Health, anything to add?
No, um, I don't like that it's not a perfect agreement, and they're not using our agreement. I think that at this point in time, he needs the staff.
Rosen, anything to add? Counsel, anyone else? Your, uh, Elwood?
Thank you. Um, in the committee meeting, we were talking about variety of services that national services would provide. Believe you mentioned that the filing and, and, and. The other question that came up was technology and, you know, we supply them with a lap leave or the other way around?
Yes, we do supply them with. And you also asked a question about will it be onsite or will it be?
Correct.
Meeting, and it will be a hybrid model where you have availability for them to work. Sometimes some of the best. The. We can make that work for that they want. So I, they're going to need. Probably the model we're going to go with. You also asked. Hyper safe.
Data security and how that's.
Right, and that, and that's something that, believe, um, that Anthony maybe also. I know we have our walls. Know the same would be true, but he also worked across. Have ways to do that. Oh, Anthony, if you could speak to how it works. They do, they do work for other cities, and.
Right, and there's different rules and laws.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
And?
Yes, I can hear you guys. So to speak to the data privacy in speaking with Richard. Our greatest suggestion is always to use the client as in your guys' equipment so that your own I T team is thoroughly. You know, involved in that process. If someone was to be let go from an assignment, you guys would be able to turn off their access immediately. We do have the ability to provide equipment through Robert Half, but to be honest, we, we try to stick away from that as much as possible. We have our own I T team that would be providing security if it was using our equipment, but if there's any chance at all to use your guys' equipment, that would be. As beneficial as possible.
Scaming, did you want to add anything on?
See an issue using city.
Thank you.
Hey. All in. Motion to approve A B twenty-three dash zero three five, authorizing the mayor to execute the H dash G A C intergovernmental cooperation contract. Asked here to as exhibit A, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Supposed. Which carries it is unanimous. Now, the statement I started to make is a reminder that items. Eleven were removed from the agenda earlier tonight, so we are on to item number twelve. A B dash twenty-three dash zero three eight. This is a motion authorizing contract solid waste in recycling services. Mr. Regos.
Up. All it wastes. Very long. Motion in front of you. Recap first in order one of. All the waste permit city, these contract. Worse. Or. Your. Very shortly. Seven when this negotiated. All we remember back. Questions. Are there? Last year and two with that. Worth. Proposals. He received three, were scored creatively and qualitatively like. Great. Apologies. Service. Scoring of the three proposals. Much. Ah. Do. Back. Credit. Break. Right. What? Right. Oh. Republic. Personally. Wise. Was that?
Okay, thank you. So what I'd like to do is just recap a little bit of some of the twists and turns, just so I think it, it's a better understanding and easier. All of some of what we've been talking about. As was mentioned in November fifteenth. The original contracts, new contract, the public forward, and it was not approved, and it was referred for additional review. The city team, which included us, met with Republic. We were really trying to push for some sort of credit for repetitive service failures. At no additional cost to the rate. Wanted to expand on that slightly because actually an important point. Um, due to the service interruptions that happened last winter. It's still last winter. There was a lot of concern about what happens when you don't just miss a week, actually start having. Miss the following week, and you miss the following week, is there a credit, is there not? We did the R F P, we included an alternative in the R F P. Basically said, what would it cost actually? Set up a credit system, not only for inclement weather or for strikes, but also for things like service delivery, like. It's delivered late. I actually go to a model where. For a number of items. And we got the rates in, and there were differences between the proponents, but it was fifty thousand, seventy thousand, numbers like that. So we looked at. Fact that we would be looking at an even higher rate increase than you're looking at, would be increasing rates even more. Create a fund go to be returned to customers for service failures, and, and that was, quite frankly, on a. Um, so what we did when we sat down and we talked with the public, we said, we absolutely want something in a council says. Repetitive service failure, we will do this on the blank, and there will be no additional. Basically said, almost verbatim, we need something in writing. Say that we've dealt with this. Winter was not. Um. They were unable to provide something. There may have been some concerns about creating a precedent, whatever reason, we were not be able, we were not able to bring something. So in January and February, there were internal discussions. With council members, with staff members, with us about what to do, that we wanted to reissue the R F P, change the contract, make. Service credits mandatory, just make a part of the base contract, we do that. Did we do other changes to the contract that may reduce costs? Should we issue, reissue the R F P, should we just ask for an addendum and ask for updated rates? Evaluate, so we looked at what we could do reasonably with the amount of that we had. So again, lead timing with these contracts, and we didn't have a lot of time. And consensus that I think everybody ended up, ended up on, or at least was our direction, was. Let's see what apology as the number two was there. Fine, sit down and talk with them and find out if we can narrow some rates and what they'll do for us. So we went. And add some initial discussions with recology. And they were actually able to greatly reduce the difference in their rates, public's rates, part of it, only. Shift. Was their idea, we asked them what to do to narrow this gap was one of their ideas. They were willing to offer a credit for a service failure. No additional cost. And they added a number of other service items just to the G store in Issaquah where. Textiles and styrofoam and other hard to recycle items, other things got added into the. They were willing to do to. And so we felt that that was a reasonable deal, city, and it avoided going out more of a test with. And that is the contract in front of you today. So with that recap, I wasn't going to repeat. What I should do is just go ahead and open.
Yep. Again, council questions, want to get them out now? Seeing in.
Thank you. This is, means to a question that raised an email, and thank you, Mr. Regos, for addressing it, I'll just get up here. These others are wondering the same and don't have the benefit of your voiceover. In the packet, on the summary statement, there is a table that reflects differences in the current Republic contract rates. The new contract. Apology, there's a substantial difference between those rates, and it's, it's quite significant. Out. However, when you read through the summary statement, it goes on to describe the exhibit A section of. Finds a more detailed table that has several columns, and one of the columns. Harrison set here looks at recology's new contract, those rates, then asterisk column that talks about Republic's new contract, those rates. And just as a layperson reading through that, I'm looking back and forth, it, it seems like there's not much difference between, I assume is the hypothetical. Scenario of what Republic's new rates will become relative to what apologies those bids are, and I do understand the two-year, ten-year difference. Acting in on that, but if you were to level set. What's going to happen with recology if, with Republic, if we not go with. And just level set the playing field. How dramatically difference are those rates for residential as well as multifamily commercial, like either some different moments. And I, I, my reading is that there's not much. I apologize for the, the format of the two tables. What I was trying to achieve there was contract in front of you is main focus of. Here are your rates today now, and here are the rates. You will succeed with this contract, and everything has been equalized. The twenty-three rates, King County tipping fees, your seven point five administrative fee, so. For what gets really messy is we issued our. Two, so we had twenty-two dollars in twenty twenty-two in county tipping fees, and then we're talking about a contract that's going to start in twenty twenty-four, and. And in a high inflationary period, it's, the numbers are all over the place. So what we tried to do in the staff report, no, we're going to go back and we're going to make sure everything. That first table is all about, here's where people are right now with. Incredible rates. Did a great job twelve years ago. It, there, there are some unfortunate outcomes of that, which is now reality bites. But you know, that, that table was just to say, this is where we are, and this is, this is actually where kind of the rest of the world is too. And no, you're looking at a really big rate increase. Whole purpose of this next table was, oh, let's just do a reality check. That's good, and exhibit A, let's do a reality check, go back and say, doing the same exercise where. Be. Some twenty-three dollars, that's the current administrative fee, it's a King County tip, is everything is held constant. And we have embedded compost in there. Service, so the service package is the same as it is today. Everything's the same, this is about where, think. I'm not talking for them, it is true that we had sat down and talked with them, we did, and. They said, hey, you know, if you give us a twelve-year contract, we'll have lower rates, you know, that's true. But they didn't bring it up, and we didn't ask the question. So there are differences, and it is not necessarily what rates would actually be, but it was a reality check, see. If we actually try to make everything out. Out. In fact, it weren't a lot of differences. A lot of the differences you did see were second. And the reason for that is that we don't describe how. Or. All we ask is that service rates means that each sector. And whether they, for example, take an overhead cost and allocate it. Yardage, image really isn't my concern, my concern is there's no subsidies that are going to. As say, in five years, your commercial sector grew by. Hundred percent and your residential sector grew by fifty percent, you'd be out of balance if you had a whole system of rates based on subsidies. So what you're seeing in that second table, when you see the different percentages by line of business is just. They feel that they're willing to stand behind as the true cost of service and not city. Your door saying, hey, we have a shortfall, commercial rates need. Those cost of service rates you signed based on that, and that. And hopefully that's a better explanation of the difference between the two tables and why. I, I thank you for that, and, and I want to give credit where credit is due, council member Jocelyn and I were chatting about it, and he called it out, and I looked at it, and I had the same opinion as he did. But I also want to thank you for that, that explanation.
Other questions?
My question is the ten-year contract versus twelve-year contract. When we first started talking about when to renew our waste management contract, I initially asked, does it have to be ten years? That's scary to me, that's a long time, and it'd be five years, and it was explained to me that it's based on truck service and. I mean. I mean, so is twelve years still within the safety zone of?
Yes, and actually. Um, part of that's tied to the fact that I'm the incumbent, so they're gonna, as so much time has passed, we're already in March. They're not going to have new trucks, state. So they're going to have to use some interim trucks there for the year, so part of this acknowledges the fact that they're going to buy new equipment, need to amortize for the remainder of the contract. Not get the full twelve years to do it, they're going to get, this period, the trucks are only going to be used for. So I feel fairly comfortable that we're not aging out on a really old equipment. The twelve-year contract is. That new equipment's only going to be.
Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor, Jeff, can you speak to, this is going to be kind of a layman's terms kind of thought. How much it, our citizens might expect to see on their monthly rates, being the differences of ecology and like, would it be like a couple of dollars, can you, can you speak?
Uh, yeah, and the last, um, last table. Shuffle papers a little bit, see what you're seeing. But I do have it here. You know, so, so basically, if you, you take a thirty-two gallon cart is, in most cities, as I alluded to in the staff report. Most cities in King County, a thirty-two gallon cart. North Bend, double that size. But let's say a thirty-two gallon cart, no, they'd be looking at essentially in twenty twenty-three dollars, a rate of about fifty-one, fifty-seven. And they'd be looking at, you know. Our assumptions about. So it's a fairly, it's in the same ballpark. And one thing I did note in the. Staff report, which I'd like to mention again, is that. The service levels are not static, is if somebody wants to recycle more and they want to compost more. It can certainly reduce their level more towards the. And that comes down, so just because they're at a sixty-four now, or a thirty-two. And that comes down, so just because they're at a 64 now or 32 now doesn't mean that. Other cities that have seen really steep rate increases, there's a. They'll see, see, see people recalibrate service level.
Yeah, see twice, I thought no more, Mr. Rosen.
Yeah, um, you mentioned the average north and resident is 64 gallons. What are those rates?
I have to defer to, you know, I don't have them in front of me.
Yeah, I'm looking, everything here is 32.
Rate sheet here. Yeah, so, so there's a 45, which is in between would be 62 and then a 64 would be seven.
Seventy-four and what is it currently just, I'm just trying to see what are increases? Or do you, if you don't have that.
I don't have that. I was running just off the most. Most.
Looking at about 70, most residents who are on six. Sorry to put you on this. Right now. Running about 40.
Forty dollars.
Okay, so we're helping, thank you.
And my memory might be failing me, this was a while back when I first read all of contract proposals, but. That there was a spot where apology, if you were like a single person, you had the smallest can and you didn't make much trash. You were composting and recycling, you'd have three other week service.
There's a monthly service. That is a 32 gallon. Is actually. Means that you don't have. Generate much. Recycling and composting is still on the regular schedule. You've got a, you've got a certain number.
Get you bringing that up. Looking again. This time we have exhausted questions. Don't go far. Thank you. I think I am correct in that, well, I don't know anymore. It's your. Back, I'm going to try again. This comes through a transportation.
Were you going to take public comments first, sir?
I didn't think it was that late. Out already. Public comment, yes, if you are a member of the public. betting we do. Would like to speak on this agenda item, if you're here in chambers, you'll move to the podium as you are already doing. You are online, it's indicated in the chat box. We will call upon you. Well, minutes, starting with Damon.
Good evening, Mayor McCarland and council members. My name is Anthony Brocato, general manager of Recology in County, 801 South Fidalgo Street, Seattle. It's an honor to be here tonight on behalf of Recology. We're excited at the prospect to demonstrate our commitment. The city of North Bend is your community's provider of recycling and solid waste services. Providing North Bend with the exceptional service starts with building a relationship with your residents, your businesses. For us, this means playing an active role in your community, supporting your organizations, events and schools for the next 12 years and potentially beyond. It's important to us that this essential service is delivered reliably with the quality from the onset. Given this opportunity, we are more than prepared to begin a partnership with North Bend in the next 12 months. Over the past decade, our tenured operations team has successfully implemented Penn City contracts. Confident in our process, we're excited to be able to add North and that list family. Also, our local call center representatives be on lockstep with our operations team, learn your neighborhoods and your streets. They perform ride alongs with our drivers and collaborate with our route mapping specialists, thoroughly learn North Bend's service plan. Equally as important, earned drivers in your city would have the opportunity, follow their work and join Recology as employee owners. And members of Teamsters Local 174. Again, thank you for the consideration in this process. It's our aim to earn your trust. Build a longstanding partnership.
Evening, Mayor, members of council, my name is Logan Harvey. I'm the government community relations manager for Recology King County. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here speaking with you tonight. Always have spoken a lot about partnership and it's something that we really take. A great importance for, for the players from Recology King County. We really truly see our cities as, as. I, I kind of want to speak a little bit of what that looks like. With our community education team or our waste zero team, we hung over 5,000 or door hangers on tenant stores throughout. So at every single community, we're going to individual tenant stores to provide recycling education. To help improve their waste diversion and reduce contamination. This led to a contamination reduction from over 20% in 2019 in the city of SeaTac below eight percent average right now. It's increasing recycling as well as we're implementing the city contract and the city of Issaquah, the new contract in the city of Issaquah. We're developing brochures and outreach to the community members to inform them more about how they can reduce their garbage bill. By properly composting and recycling and. Like in Issaquah in North Bend, we'd be going to businesses to actively educate them on how to do that. Analyze their waste streams, look at how much recycling is in their garbage, how much food waste is at a restaurant, moving that into a cheaper stream. So while rates will be higher initially on the garbage side of things. Low cost compost and embedded recycling provide solutions for customers to reduce their overall service bills. As the government community relations manager, I work directly with staff meeting on a monthly basis and, and work individually to solve problems. When we've had customers who've had some service issues, I give them my cell phone number. He directly texts me if they have any ongoing issues. I work with our operations team to make sure that they get resolved. This has gone so far as me driving to people's, well, the one city had a, a bunch of pallets dumped in their recycling bin, couldn't get service or truck. I drove myself in a van to pull that material out of there. We are here, we are local, uh, we have a local customer service team. We have a recology store right around the corner where customers can bring the, the batteries and recycle, uh, the batteries, fluorescent light bulbs and other materials that they're bringing to your city hall now. And we'd be happy to set up a streetscape to pick up for that as well, so you guys don't have to be hauling it yourself. We look forward to being engaged in your community. We look forward to doing touch of truck events at your preschools and schools, educating your students on how to properly recycle. And, uh, we can't wait to work with you as well.
Didn't realize I'd get to speak twice. Andy Wyker, Republic Services, you've heard from me many times at this podium and an email and. Think I'm going to take us back 15 months to that whole January endless snowstorm. And I've apologized for that many times and I'll just say, when there's snow on the ground and our trucks can't get through, it's not safe. One day labor disruption that we had that seems to have thrown this whole process into rears. Tried to address that when we got the recommendation last November. We absolutely are committed to this community, been in this community for 30 years. Drivers, my team, my outreach staff, we love serving this community. We love being at your preschools and your these centers, working with your multifamily customers to try to reduce contamination. We know this community served this community for 30 years and a one day disruption that we tried to address when we got the initial recommendation. The top evaluator, top score by your staff and a robust success. We want to work through that, we wanted to work through that. Staff changed, meetings got canceled, agenda bills got tabled. We didn't know who to talk to, we didn't know how to engage, had a couple of conversations, but we needed to hear from this council. We wanted to hear which direction you wanted to go with any credits then and any credits going forward. We weren't sure which direction you would want to go based on the conversations we had had for three months and based on the conversation we expected. On February 3rd with your finance committee. That never happened, we never got re-engaged. We don't want to lose this community, we don't want to lose this service. Our employees are committed to this work. I personally love coming to this community and doing all the community outreach I do with my team. Of course, Recology wants your business, who wouldn't want to serve North? Been here for 30 years, we want to be here for the next 10 years or the next 12 years. You'll level the playing field to give us that opportunity. We have trucks, it's true, but we would get some new trucks. We have some plans already in place, ready to roll. We have other community we can deploy those in. What I'm most excited about for this community is electric vehicles. We are the leader in sustainability on a national level and on a local level. Have dedicated staff here that are ready to work with you and your community to bring electric vehicles, help you meet your climate action goals. We are doing innovative work in the industry, our polymer center down in Las Vegas. All of the recycling we pick up here, plastics are going to be sent down there and water bottles are going to be turned back into water bottles, not clothing and not trucks. Know how to do this work, do it at scale and we do it here right at home, one neighborhood at a time. King County Public Services Cities have a greater recycling rate than any other provider in the industry. We're committed to this work, we've done it years and we're committed to doing it for years to come. Really appreciate the opportunity to work with your team again, incorporate anything you want in the next contract. We want to hear from you about the customer credits, we're willing and able and wanted to engage, we were never given that opportunity. Give us the opportunity and we can close the deal and serve your community without interruption years to come. Please consider that, thank you.
I was here in chamber. Do we have anyone online? Online. Waking me up, Mr. Lowenbeck. And I'll look to you, did I have the right committee off on everything tonight?
Well, we brought the first go around and then things got all cattywampus, so I'm not exactly sure what the.
I'm going to look to you anyway, how about?
Okay, motion to approve AB 23 dash O 38 authorizing mayor enter into and execute a 12 year comprehensive garbage recyclable and compostable collection services contract. Ology King County Incorporated for period of April 1. For the period of April 1, 2024 through March 36, forming content by the city attorney.
Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Rosen. Sharan Beck, after reading a four page, uh, motion, can you?
I'm going to be voting no, uh, $3 million is a lot for the course of the proposed contract. And, uh, that's a huge difference.
Yeah, I think we can't really have a discussion without talking about how massive the increase is going to be. Regardless of which, uh, company we go with, just no way around it. And this is going to be difficult. Certainly not looking forward to hearing from some of my family members when they get on the mail. That being said, it is the reality in county and our garbage system that we have. There's no way around that, all these are going to see these increases. Um, all things being equal, believe the rates are comparable between the two. I think with recology, going to be adding a comprehensive recycling program, which I think better aligns with our community's values. And most important to me and everyone will have their own reason, is dressing misservice. I think there was a huge miss on that last time. It was an opportunity, yes, it was not in our contract. It was an opportunity for goodwill and in public, fortunately not step up and deal with our citizens in a way that I. Um, I understand that they're willing to maybe do that in a contract negotiation, but there was an opportunity and. Had that storm to just do the right. Uh, those are some of the major issues, there's lots of others. I'm sure there'll be some comments from the rest of council members. I do have something I'd like to propose, I'll wait.
Mr. Gahal.
Yeah, I, I do have some concerns here. I have some concerns that we are comparing, not comparing apples. Some concerns that, yes, we have not. This is through December, this is going to be a large increase to our resident. I would like those that we, and I would have to ask Mr. Regos. Give a little period of time for our residents to see what this is and propose that we make this a first motion reading. Um, to at least advertise it to our residents so that they understand, I think it's going to be a huge hit. I'd like to see a comparison sample to happen. So my biggest concern is making sure our residents have the ability to make some comments so that we have it. Last time it came through was last year, this is the first time we've applied forward, first time I think anybody's seen it. And I think it should be advertised, get some, then bring it forward to the next. Um, Mark with that. And that's, I'm, I'm not asking any more than to the next council meeting and my biggest concern is process and allowing our.
I wanted to ask. Mr. Gahal, I really heard kind of two things here, one, one, the notion of possibly. You know, only amendment, this is a first reading and a second. Different than seeking the administration to go back essentially rebid again. I wanted to be sure I'm understanding those, that you're seeing those as.
See, those are two different things, yes.
But your real ask is just to do a first.
Absolutely.
And so.
That we give time for our citizens to comment.
Before you, and so I heard it also as a question just to get. So, um, I ask. Hold it as the actual formal motion until we go through some more.
Can I just ask a follow up question real, Mr. Regos? We spoke earlier today, if we don't go and try to get all new numbers. We just want to wait for an additional two weeks for process public and we don't require you to go out more information. How is that? That's something we're okay if we wait till April 4th and we just give a chance, a community a chance. Thank you, that answers my.
And that was my question too.
You, I, I know this has been a long process and, and I would like to re and echo of Mr. Rosen's commentary, which was. I believe what Recology offers and their business model. Was owned and, and a lot of things that they are bringing to the table is very progressive, contemporary. And quite frankly, on point with our brand. Um, so, so they have me opening both my eyes when I, when I read their paperwork. I, I reached out to half a dozen of their customers, different agencies and talked with them. Mayors, public directors and so forth. And I heard nothing but raving feedback about how fantastic they are to work with. Substantiating all the claims about look outreach, engagement, really going the extra mile above and beyond what is dictated in the contract. So having that firsthand, I know it's a qualitative sample, but having that experience. Communicated to me meant a lot as far as that's concerned. Now, with respect to the credit, I agree with that as well and, and quite frankly, we spoke ad nauseam about the credit after it was happening. You were on the podium, public representative was on the podium. We talked about it quite a bit and it was constantly met with, sorry, wasn't in the contract. Uh, there are references to Samamish was able to get credits because it was in Samamish's contract. And even with our 30 year partnership and relationship and a lot of these great things that were being said about the dynamic in our two agencies. The good faith, as Mr. Rosen said, failed to present itself when we were asking. And so it took getting to a negotiation, took having a very viable competitor at the table to get Republic to come forward with, oh, wait, wait. We can do it, we're here to help you. So I, I'm confused a, a little bit on the different dynamics here, but I shouldn't be, it's a business transaction. So at this point in time, I'm definitely interested in Recology. I would be open to public format with respect to. Public format with respect to allowing great pairs and citizens to come forward. Here the differences because as Mr. Rosen said, it's going to be a huge increase regardless. We stay with Republic, we go with recology, no matter what, it's going to be an increase. And, and perhaps bringing people to the table, allowing them to see the decision that we're making and understanding. That we're really looking for a partnership with an agency that is aligned with our brand, aligned with our values. Really looks at the environment, the betterment of our community as first and foremost within their business model. So it, it might be a good thing to do that as well.
Mr. Jocelyn.
Uh, good evening. Thank you. I'll be voting in support. I'm excited by this after a bunch of reasons. Seems to me that there's. Uh, a party that we're engaging with who gets it sees it more like I see the challenges that are coming before us as a planet, as a community, as a society, and that plus money to address. And this goes farther towards acting in a way that yes, matches the city's brand speaks. Turns and interests that my children express to me on a regular basis, concerns for the health of the planet going forward. I'm going to, I do everything I can that aligns with the city's interest to advocate things that I think also. Pay additional benefits from what I've heard from Jeff. And trusting and doing my homework, the process that's been engaged in has been a negotiation. Folks have been able to speak to it. Given opportunities to share their concerns and interests and past histories. What's before us tonight is to enter a new contract with recology. Numbers before me. Uh, well, you know, it's the best guess. I trust everybody's intention in this or, you know, well-meaning. But it's cheaper, two dollars and forty cents a month cheaper for a thirty-two gallon tank under the recology contract being proposed than it is the Republic. But as has been pointed out, what we face is a doubling of cost period full stop because this contract was a great deal ten years ago. What was twenty-six dollars a month is now roughly fifty-two, regardless of which hall or which decision is made by this council. That increase is going to be substantial and big and we can nibble around the edges. But I'm willing to nibble around the edges to what in fact looks to me for a cheaper rate for many residents. Uh, and I believe, you know, newer equipment and fresh eyes on this is going to come in and there are opportunities to, service level is elastic. People are going to respond to a service level that is elastic. Look at the numbers from the three different haulers that I put together and, and North Bend is generating three times the. The waste as commensurate neighbor, uh, communities on the east side, and I'm not sure why, but there's room for improvement there. Um, the clock is ticking on this. If it goes to a second reading, fine. And this isn't, we aren't voting on whether to go through recology. Republic are voting whether or not to move forward with this contract tonight that's been brought forward because of a lot of hard work, time effort. Uh, and I will be supporting it tonight. And I want to thank everybody who's committed so much time and energy to getting us.
I support, like, Mr. Jocelyn, I support voting for recology. I think they are the future of waste management. They're all about zero waste. They're about electric vehicles, about climate. Money's not more. They're a hundred percent employee owned. So any money they make is not going to the stock market, going directly back to their employees. I imagine would help labor disputes, be wrong. And I think all gee, they are willing to speak with us and work with us. And also Republic, they keep saying they've been with us for thirty years, but when I researched it, they bought Allied Waste in two thousand eight, six point three billion dollars. And this is for the Washington State Journal, an article I read. They have not been our service provider for thirty years. They've been our service provider for fifteen years after they bought out our last waste management.
Thank you for allowing me to add a few more comments. My council members right next to me and right across from me and you, you find people out there. Our staff, thank you for all the hard efforts that it's taken. Jeff, great, great work, by the way. Uh, my one remaining concern, and I really appreciate what everybody has been saying, I align more with recology now. Um, I have a variety of reasons that most of you spoke to. Um, my one last concern is to potentially go with a first reading right now so we can let this be heard to the public one more time at least. And that, and move it forward from there. Don't want to hold this back much longer or any longer essentially, but I think it's worthwhile to let our. Community know exactly what's coming their way as best we can. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah, I did actually have something I wanted to pose. Um, would be revenue neutral. It would help reduce the cost contract. Uh, one of the things we have here is a, the act, I believe, a seven and a half cent or administrative. Currently, Mark, you'll back me up on numbers. If I say anything wrong, please interrupt me. Believe currently our seven and a half percent rate brings in about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars per year. If we stay at seven and a half percent, I believe that revenue stream will go up to about three hundred and thirty thousand or something like that.
It's in that poll.
Okay, so if we were to, as a city, commit to just keeping a hundred and sixty thousand per year as our revenue stream from this administrative fee. We could reduce the cost of this contract, two and a half, three and a half percent maybe. From where we are now by taking that seven and a half percent rate and dropping it down to maybe about four percent, I think, would bring us a hundred and sixty thousand a year. So it is, there is something we can do. I think we were willing to go to twelve years to save two hundred thousand. This also would save another two hundred thousand dollars by reducing our administrative fee to four percent. And as I said, it would be revenue neutral. It will not cost the city any money. We'll still take in the same amount of money. But it will show that we are willing to do everything we can by to control costs in the areas that we do have. So that is a proposal of mine. I'm not sure how to word it. You see, you'll help me, um, at some point. And I would like to see that change, uh, from seven and a half down to four percent.
As Mr., as Mr. Godhealth was suggesting a change, I was, I was thinking and commenting to council. Next council member introduced the notion of a motion without a motion being. Would get the wrath.
He said, help me.
That with that, with that said, I'm, I think I'm seeing a motion to my right of, of. Share another thought, because I'm not hearing a motion yet. I'm hearing the notion being floated for discussion.
Yes, I'd like to discuss it and see how folks feel about that.
I've got a couple of comments on it. Mr. Son.
Well, right, we're legislating on the fly here, folks. Um, a seven and a half percent administrative fee, I'm sure that that's in the budget and expended to some end. Richard? Well, the seven and a half fee that's levied in this contract against waste hauling must support some existing administrative service within the city. Am I not correct? And if you pull that money, it can't, it isn't exactly a neutral proposal.
I think Mr. Regos may have more information on how this money is.
Yeah, what neighbors.
Mr. Regos, is it possible that us doing that work has gone up as last years? Mr. Godhealth.
Yeah, I'd like to do, um, a comment. I, I, this is not making a motion on the fly. This is discussing. An open session that is going to be important. It's an exception to the competition to make a motion on the fly. Though I do have a concern that I will address now, Mr. Rosen is. Even if you keep it at that level, we have experienced inflation. How do you expect to take consideration for inflation?
Inflation is built into this contract. We have a CPI. So this contract will go up and adjust inflation therefore, four percent. Um, I will say to Mr. Regos, and there's that, I don't believe. Avent management should be on the backs of this contract. This is garbage. I understand there's an impact. But this is not the place to look for additional funds for our roads. Really think this is not the place to do it. Just my opinion.
Right. So, uh, and, and I, by any else, I mean on any, any part of this conversation, I think we have two potential motions here. Um, uh, I would, in indulgence, I would suggest that start with, um. Uh, the notion of the action and the. Service fee. Mr. Rosen, you have a motion you want to make or based on the conversation.
Uh, Lisa helped me on the fly here. Just a motion to change the administrative fee from seven point five to four percent.
Okay, so the motion, yeah, and this is a. Motion sub to the main motion is to reduce the administrative service fee. From seven point five percent. You do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Mr. Godhealth. Um, it. Did well, anything, Dad?
Nothing, Dad.
You, Godhealth, want to say anything more to the motion?
Yeah.
Right. Anyone else want to speak any further on the motion? Uh, and we'll take a vote on this motion. All in favor of a motion to reduce the administrative service fee from seven point five to four percent, say aye.
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 I heard one, two, three. All, uh, those opposed.
Aye.
Or? Motion fails. Uh, Mr. Godhealth, uh, I believe your motion you still want to make, and I believe it is as simple as adding to the end of the current motion. Say first reading.
You're correct in bringing it back. Before, we've always had the issue of making.
The motion's simple, but.
Yeah, I'm just making it clear because I know in the past we have had issues where we haven't followed through and said, this is the date of the motion.
Um, then I'll ask legal counsel.
Point of information, point of information. So, um, so thank you. I appreciate the, the extending for the process public comment. Um, just a quick question on the logistics of that, as we're talking about April fourth, we're talking about. Making an announcement to the public. So when we think about this process, we have the right window of time to make it happen. Question number one and question number two, I just out of curiosity. Um, what sort of communication will be, will be made to the public to get the word out?
Formal one would. Um, and the next.
Yeah, I think I get even better to that, other than the legal aspects of it. Um, confirm that, no, we don't have noticing time next council meeting for advertising appearing. We can certainly put out a press release on it. The number one way that we advertise it, just as tonight is by pushing agenda in the city council meeting. That would, that would be the guaranteed way that we would, of course, I would have to. Sure that we, we press release on it as well. You know.
All right. And so given the nature of this, that we don't have to worry about it in paper of record and.
Provided we're not asking.
If I, I'm just going to try and offer the amendment that I think is sought after, is it not as simple as simply adding as a first reading to the current agenda bill that's been proposed?
That was my suggestion, but I did hear Mr. Godhealth was concerned about it coming back. Are you sure they back?
It's only in the past we've made comments. Well, when is it going to come back? Are we going to, wanted to make it clear. I'm not. Pass this body for this, that what I asked. I'm asking.
And Marshall, if you want to string something together.
Would be to add. First reading.
Mr. Godhealth, is that your motion?
Yes.
Bottom mic. Do we have a second?
Second.
This is second by Ms. Miller. I think probably fairly thoroughly discussed. Anything you need to add? Anyone else need to add anything? All right. Uh, and the motion, uh, before you is to amend the main motion. To add the phrase at the end of the current motion as a first reading, a second reading. In favor?
Aye.
Disposed?
No.
Meaning? All right. Wow. Uh, this is fun. Okay, I heard, I heard two notes and one abstention. That means the motion carries or votes, uh, in the affirmative. It's calling Miss, uh, Mr. Loudon Beck, uh, voting no. Mr. Jocelyn abstaining. Okay. Now, motion before you is. To approve AB twenty-three dash zero three eight, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute. Twelve-year comprehensive garbage recyclables and compostables collection services contract with recology in county Inc. For the period of April first, twenty twenty-four. Through March first, six, form and content approved by the city attorney. It's a first reading, second reading, April fourth, twenty twenty-three. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Disposed?
No.
Pushing carries, six to one, Mr. Loudon Beck voting no. Right. That was fun. Get back to the top of my agenda here. Uh, that was thankfully the last item on the main agenda. We will move to mayor capital administrative concerns and initiatives. Throw the ball up in the air and it'll land on Mr. Godhealth.
Thank you. I just hope everybody has enjoyed their time with their family as I know a lot of. Family members have come back for spring bake during this holiday. So. You had some good times. Uh, the son is staying out later, getting longer days. You spend time out there enjoying the beautiful weather and, uh, please be safe and watch for. Kids out in the street playing as we move closer into spring and into summer.
Ms. Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Once again, thanks to our wonderful, uh, Citizen Academy graduates and our wonderful staff. I commend you all. What a, what a great effort. I was able to, if at a couple of the meetings and I saw firsthand for myself how incredible you all are on. So thank you again. Great night.
Mr. Elwood.
I'll just jump in on the. Bill of that, that was great. Um, the Citizen Academy, to me seems like a awesome program. Um, I've talked with a few members and just hearing the bubbling of ideas, the enthusiasm and getting involved is fantastic. Do you think it's a great? We've left said gateway process into getting more involved. Uh, either the local politics or organizations or however you want to characterize it. or however you want to characterize it? So it's an exciting thing. So well done, Mayor. Well done, the administration bringing this forward. And congratulations to everybody for making it a success. And I look forward to seeing more of these academies going forward. And I love the fact that you gave out diplomas. That's an awesome thing. So well done. Great program. Look forward to the future of it.
Mr. Jocelyn?
Thank you, Your Honor. I am excited by the waste management contract moving forward. I think that's a great thing. We had an ear in unanimity. I hope in two weeks we come together. I will apologize again if my use of language offends members. I will tend to be mindful and not go there and make people somehow take offense with my use of language. That's certainly not my intent. I want very much for this council to focus on interests of this city, moving this city forward as a team, working towards common outcomes. I think that which unites us and what we strive for so are our ways, differences. And I, I am huge to that. I just, those of you that doesn't know that, the public as well.
You, Mr. Loudback?
Nothing tonight, Your Honor.
You, Mr. Rosen?
Thank you to everyone who participated, obviously, in the Citizens Academy, said by others, but I certainly want to echo that. Lisa, Bree, thank you very much. Bree, you look like visitor vase back there. You're controlling everything. But thank you, staff, for doing such a fantastic job. I appreciate my fellow council members' concern about public comment and process on this contract and making this a first reading. I think we're going to make a mistake. Let's make it on the side of too much public comment. So I do appreciate those efforts, my fellow council members tonight on that. That is all, Your Honor.
Similar to everyone else, congratulations to the first graduates of the North Bend Citizens Academy. I commend you. Big deal. Thank you for, I mean, during your busy schedules to learn how the city is run. I really believe it will help you to educate others in our community about City of North Bend. And now you know who to call when you have a pothole on your street.
That's a good one. Well, geez, I guess I have to, again, jump on board with all of those comments. So it was a great night to have our graduates with us, have the reception prior to the council meeting. That was a great time to get a little interaction. I do note that we wore most, all of them out, and the attrition rate, the attrition rate was pretty high.
Do the stragglers get extra bonuses?
I'm not sure that you encouraged them to look at your service with tonight, but this was a good meeting to get a good flavor for city council action. So that's great. Few other more mundane items here in that regard. The yard waste recycling program starts up this Saturday, March 25th, from 8:00 a.m. to noon at Public Works. Program is open to select, unselect Saturdays through October, is available to all who reside in 98045 zip code area. Find out more about the program, including a list of days and events, is open and acceptable materials. Please visit news section of the city website. Mention that tomorrow morning, Meet Up with the Mayor series is returning. Community members are invited to meet with me tomorrow morning, on March 22nd, 10 a.m. to 11 a.m. at the North Bend Bakery to discuss city-related topics that are important to you. Good that I'm reading this, so I know what I'm doing tomorrow morning. Thank you, Bree. The city is seeking residents to serve on the Human Services Task Force. This task force members will advise the mayor on a variety of matters related to the city's human services grant funding program. If you're interested in serving on this task force, please visit news section of the city website, find out about the application process. That is a new thing just beginning. Council, I wanted to mention an item that was changed recently in that the topic for next week's metal, excuse me, work-study session has been changed. Originally, we had tended to talk about the housing action plan. That is not ready to come forward, so that topic is being delayed. That gave us an opportunity, needed opportunity, to bring another topic to you for opening discussions. That is on the Meadowbrook Farm new ILA. I mentioned to you several times that the 25-year agreement, the current management process expires in May. We're working hard on coming up with a new management plan, and we want to walk you through what that looks like. I know that council member Miller and Colin in particular have been involved in this and know a lot about it. We want to make sure everybody understands what we're proposing and that you're all informed to give that. So that session, we had a great deal by Colin, as well as Mike Pretty, then we'll zoom over. I also want to do a shout out to local business, Rainier Asphalt Concrete, their donation of climate materials improved multiple pathways in North. Recently finished placing approximately 2,000 damaged asphalt pathways in EJ Roberts Park. Last fall, they did a expanded portion of the Tanner Trail, creating that pave trail connection to the new roundabout located at 436 North Way. Great donation by them. Appreciate it. Obviously, that holds us with With that, at this time, we are going to move to executive session, discuss potential litigation pursuant to RCW 42.301101I, property acquisition, and pursuant to RCW 42.301101B, collective bargaining pursuant to RCW 42.30144. Even with those three topics, we expect to be about 45 minutes. There will be no following of the executive session. And so with that, we will end the recording for tonight. Council, let's take about five minutes.